Welcome to the November 16, 2022 Huntington Beach Planning Commission Meeting. While the Planning Commission welcomes public involvement and free speech, it rejects comments from anyone that are discriminatory, defamatory, or otherwise not protected speech. Those comments will not inform nor be considered by the Planning Commission and may be cause for the Chair to interrupt the Speaker. Such comments will not be consented to or otherwise adopted by the Planning Commission in its discussions and findings for any matter tonight. Okay, so I would like to ask Commissioner Adam to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Staff, can we have the roll call?
Yes, good evening. Commissioner Adam?
Here.
Commissioner Mandick? Vice Chair Acosta Galvón?
Here.
Chair Perkins?
Here.
Commissioner Scandura?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Ray?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, so now is the time for public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We have no public speakers for items that are not on the agenda.
Thank you. So we will move on to public hearing items. Next, we have public hearing item 21-003 and associated actions to update the general plan housing element for the 2021 through 2029 planning period. Commissioners, please state your disclosures, and I'll start with Commissioner Adam on my right.
Yes, I spoke with staff.
I spoke with staff about this item and voted on the previous item in October.
I spoke to staff as well. I also spoke to Commissioner Scandura. I spoke to Councilmember Kim Carr. I also spoke to residents of the Edwards Hill community, and I drove by the Seaford Community along Ernst Avenue.
And I participated in the last Planning Commission meeting about the housing element. I also participated in all the workshops and the study sessions. I spoke with the mayor, and then I spoke today with the staff along with Chair Perkins.
Yes, I also spoke to staff. I spoke to Councilmember Natalie Mosher, and I was also part of the previous vote to the study sessions and voted at the last Planning Commission meeting regarding the housing element. Thank you.
I have no additions to my previous disclosures from the last meeting.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Staff, may we have the presentation?
Yes, Nicole Ave is going to be giving our presentation this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Perkins and Commissioners. The item we will discuss tonight is the 2021 through 2029 housing element update and the associated implementation actions to accommodate the RENA. So first, there are two main components of the housing element update overall. First is the housing element document itself. This is a planning and policy document, and it's a mandated element or a chapter of the city's general plan. The implementation actions of the housing element are what is necessary to accommodate the city's plan for housing through zoning. The implementation actions propose zoning overlays that don't change the base zoning designations of a property. So here we have the city's 2021 through 2029 RENA. The RENA gives every jurisdiction a quantified housing need by income category. As you can see, the total number of units to demonstrate zoning capacity for is 13,368 units. Just about 5,800 of those units are for very low and low-income households, about 2,300 are for moderate-income households, and 5,215 for above moderate. So this table shows an overall breakdown of the city's strategy to accommodate the RENA. The housing element shows that the city is not able to meet the RENA through projects
Recommended Action F from the staff report is no longer part of the recommendation. That was the zoning map amendment for the RMH rezonings. Also, Action C for the general plan land use element is also recommended to be modified to include removing those three rezoning sites. This concludes the staff presentation. The next steps include on November 29th, the city council will hold a public hearing on these same items heard by the planning commission tonight. Staff and our consultant, Kim Lee Horn and Associates, is available for any questions that the planning commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Now we'll allow commissioners to ask questions of staff. And by the way, we do have a number of speakers in my queue. So instead of using the view speakers button, I just asked that if you want to speak, raise your hand. So do any of the commissioners have any questions? Okay, Commissioner Scandura.
Okay. In the last three or four days, planning commissioners have received something like almost 60 emails, mostly from residents in the Seagate community. And although they support option three, they ask that certain changes be made to the proposals here. And those changes include for the two lots, 393, 394 at Ernest and Golden West, that the density be limited to just seven units per acre, which is the current density. They also ask that any development on those two lots be limited to two stories, that any development within 100 feet of Ernest Drive be limited to three stories, prohibit balconies and roof decks within 100 feet of Ernest Drive, and then finally continue the prohibition of parking on Ernest Drive. And by the way, that's, I have a separate question on that. So what is the staff's response to those requests?
So the existing development standards of the RH zone address a lot of those concerns. Regarding the height compatibility, the max height in the SP9 area is 35 feet, and the same maximum height is 35 feet in the RH zone already. So those two are lined up. And regarding the parking on Ernest Drive, the housing element and the implementation programs don't affect that at all. It's not related. It's not under the purview of this document or these actions to make any changes or amendments to the status of overnight parking or parking on Ernest Drive.
So, and right now, is parking already prohibited on Ernest Drive?
There are signs posted.
It's, on one side, it's, there's no parking, and on the side where there's an existing mini storage, there's no parking overnight.
Right. So, and...
There's no changes proposed to that as part of this, and there would be no actions that the planning commission would take tonight that would enable those to be removed.
Right. But otherwise, parking restrictions on public streets are outside of the purview of the housing element. That's something the city council would have to handle through an ordinance then.
That's correct.
Okay. And did we hear back from the housing and community development on these latest changes?
Yes, they did accept our strategy for accommodating the RENA, and they will, if the document is adopted, they'll review it after the council adopts it. But they were supportive of the overall strategy.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners?
I can...
Go ahead, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yeah, I want to thank staff for meeting with residents and looking for alternatives sites around Huntington Beach. One question I did have, if the city has been in communication with Frontier, it seems that we had the RMH zone in different areas, like the Chukichi site, and then we're taking that out now. So is the Frontier site at risk of, for example, if we haven't been in communication with the Frontier owner or the landlord, that they could come back and say, we don't want our site to be rezoned?
Well, with these revisions, it's not being rezoned. It would now have an overlay placed on it, so Frontier would have every right to do what their property, what they are allowed to do today. The overlay would just add some additional allowable uses. So the overlay actually puts them in a better position from a property owner's standpoint.
Okay. And then I know that some of the concerns of residents close to SP9 and SP7 regarding schools, did we ever get something from the Huntington Beach City School District regarding their stance on the housing element? Because I know we did receive from the Oceanview School District, but...
No, we had a meeting with all of the school districts early on during the public outreach phase, and then as we got closer to the public hearings, we did receive an email from the city school district. They wanted to get some more information about what was proposed. We sent them some detailed information, and I don't think we got a response back.
No, we didn't hear back from them.
Okay. And then I did have a question regarding the attorney letter we received from the Chukichi site. That automatically, just because we're already removing it, just making sure the city's under no obligation to move forward with that?
No, that's effectively what they're requesting. I don't think they have intentions to do residential anymore on that site, so we would, because of that, we would remove it. Any rezoning that we would do, we would want to do in concert with the property owners.
Okay. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, since there are no other questions, we're going to move on to the public comment section of the meeting for this item. Before I open that up, I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight and participating in the process. We do look forward to hearing your comments. We do have 20 speakers, approximately 20 speakers lined up to speak tonight, so just want to remind you of my comments that I made at the beginning of the meeting. Please keep your comments civil. And also, when you come to the mic, since some of you are probably new to the process, we have two mics. You'll be called down in groups of five or six. And we do ask that you approach the mic so that you're ready to speak as soon as the last speaker has completed their speaking. Each of you will be given three minutes, so we do request that you observe that so that we can get through all the speakers, because we do want to hear everyone's comments tonight. So having said that, I now open the public hearing section.
Okay. Will the following speakers please come down and line up at the microphones? Jim Byrd, Isabel Karsh, Christina Kernan, Shirley Detloff, Karen Carroll, and Bob Walsh.
Hello, my name is Jim Byrd. I'm a resident of the Tides here in Huntington Beach. I've lived there for about eight years. I have a raspy lung condition, and as part of my health plan, I walk most every day through the neighborhood. One of the areas I walk through is Garfield and Golden West, so I'm very familiar with those two pieces of property. I'm highly opposed to rezoning those for high-density, low-income housing. I think the infrastructure is not suitable to contain that. I walk also over by the high school quite a lot in the mornings and in the afternoons. I see the traffic congestion there already, and I'm concerned about the impact that high-density housing will have on that. Also, there's no street parking on either Garfield or Golden West, and in fact, Stewart, which is a small cross street, has limited parking, no overnight parking. So all parking for those complexes would need to be self-contained. I'm also concerned because obviously we have water constraints in our neighborhood already. We're not allowed to water our plants more than a couple times a week. I'm concerned that maybe we haven't really fully looked at the impact to having those two complexes built there. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Isabel Karsh. I'm president of the Homeowners Association of the Tides. I represent 77 homes and their owners, and we are completely opposed to this development. At the Tides, we're on 8.7 acres, and we have 77 units. The southeast corner of Garfield and Golden West would be a travesty. You're looking at 1.6 acres, 70 units per acre, that could go up to 104 units in that tiny little lot, right off the street. So what's happening is we're taking Beach Boulevard, high-rises, and putting them on Golden West. Our property values will go down. The traffic is going to be a nightmare. It's already busy as it is, and it is really something that all of us are totally opposed to. 104 units on 1.6 acres. That is not what that area stands for. I know how crowded we even are at the Tides, and we're only 77 units for 8.7 acres, so I'm pleading with you to please not destroy Golden West. Unfortunately, that was not considered in the last, I know a lot of Seagate people came, a lot of Edwards Hill, which is where I used to live, came, and now the residents at the Tides have asked me to speak. So that's all I have to say. We are completely opposed to that development. It makes no sense on that corner. Thank you.
Hello. Hello, I'm Christina. I'm a real estate broker. I live in the city of Huntington Beach for about 20 years. I'm a resident of the Tides as well, and I highly oppose building high-density properties nearby, and the reason being is because first, I believe that we have to work on the infrastructure of the city with better streets before starting building all these high-density units. Second of all, I think that that will depreciate the values of the properties, because there will be a lot of congestion on Golden West, and we do not need another Bellatera, because all of you already know what's the traffic, the congestion of all the cars that goes to Bellatera, and I would hate to raise my little kid on a street that's full of cars. Thank you very much, and I appreciate all your work.
Good evening, Chair Perkins and members of the commission. My name is Shirley Detloff. I've been a resident of Huntington Beach for over 50 years, and I served once on the planning commission many years ago. I'm here tonight to ask that you vote for the recommendations that were sent to you by your council and are backed by the staff members. I think that you already know this, but the city council members, and I think members of your own staff, have met with the people in the Holly Seacliff area and have come to some resolution of many of the issues that they brought forward, which were very fair, and I think they've gotten a very fair answer. So now it is back with you, and I hope you will make, tonight will take that vote so that this issue can move forward. Delays could be very costly for this city. If we were to delay in not getting something certified by the state, and we've had many legal issues with the state of California, Huntington Beach has been a participant in those, and every one of those were lost. So we know that those RENA numbers are going to stand, and we're going to have to find a way to meet them. If we don't pass this tonight and then on up to the council, this could be very costly for the city. The city could, first of all, lose out on state funding, and the ultimate would be that the state of California could take over all of the planning issues in the city of Huntington Beach and have done so with other cities. So it's not something that is not a reality. So I ask you tonight to, you've all read the reports, I know, and I know how tedious that can become at times. They're very long and very, sometimes very intricate, but this council, this commission has served this community very well in the past few months, and as I know, some of you will be leaving, and I hope you will make this decision, send it up to the city council, and let them know that you are supportive of what they have put forward, and that this can now go to the state of California to be certified so that we stay in charge of our own planning issues. And I thank you, and I thank all of you for the work that you have done on this issue. It was very difficult, and a special thanks to your staff. No staff has had to undertake such a difficult assignment, and I think they did it well, and we certainly, many of us in this community, appreciate your efforts and the efforts of this staff. It's been incredible. So thank you for this time.
Let me call the following speakers. Jeff Hubbard, Dennis Holloway, Teresa Holloway, Carl Temple, and Mickey Golden. Please come down and line up.
Good morning, good evening, Commissioner Perkins and members of the planning commission. My name is Karen Carroll, longtime resident. Tonight, I want to build on the words a once-celebrated vice presidential candidate who said, "I can see Russia from my house." My version of this is, "I can see Harbor Lights Resort Apartments at an angle from my bedroom window." I checked the map, and it is zoned medium-high density, and it's right across the street. I believe the conventional wisdom is that this very fact would have kept my home from appreciating in value. However, I assure you, this is not, this is far from the case. I'd also like to mention that Harborview School, a few blocks away, is doing just fine in spite of being the hub in high, medium-high, and low residential zones. I think you can see my point. Well-planned development does not inevitably lead to decline. If well-planned, it results in neighborhoods that continue to thrive. Please, let us rethink the doomsday rhetoric. Thank you.
My name's Bob Walsh. I live in the Seagate community. I've been a resident of Huntington Beach for the last six years. I'm also a commercial real estate developer. I've developed almost $4 billion of real estate during my professional career. I want to start out by just correcting a comment I heard earlier. The residents of the Seagate community were caught blindsided, okay? The residents of the Edwards Hill community had significantly more time to meet with city council and to meet with the planning commission staff. We did not. We had a neighborhood meeting on October 23rd. We had 50 to 70 residents show up. Not one person had heard about this, okay? So we haven't had sufficient time. There hasn't been public notice. Finally, there was public notice issued, but per government code 65004, that requires that residents within 300 feet receive public notice. That notice did get mailed out on November 4th. However, that notice was very, not very descriptive, and it wasn't apparent to anyone who received it what specific parcels would be impacted. If you, if you want to go and try to determine what parcels were impacted, you needed to go to, for example, I back up to parcel 393, okay? So if you want to look at that parcel and understand what the overlay was, you have to go to Appendix B14, which is page 329 of an 1,171-page document. So when this, when I hear that this, that the city has been transparent and has made outreach efforts, that really upsets me, because no one in my neighborhood, in fact, I still believe several of my neighbors who back up to parcel 393 and 394 are still not aware of this. One other comment that I want to make is, when you look at the feasibility of parcel 393, one of the, one of the criteria, as I understand it, of the housing element overlay is, it needs to be feasible from a development perspective. I also understand that if a property owner opts out, then you cannot include it in the housing element overlay. I've discussed this with council member Dan Kalmerick, and he informed me, because I was asking him why the Thomas parcels weren't included in this. You know, those are eyesores to our community, and he said it was because those, that parcel owner, or those parcel owners had opted out. I talked to the owner of the parcel immediately behind my home, this morning in fact, and they said they do not intend to sell that parcel. It's got oil wells on it, and they want to keep that in operation.
I'll yield a minute of my time to Bob.
I'm sorry, I can't accommodate that. Please, please, thank you for your comments. We need to move on to the next speaker.
All right. It's all you, Jeff.
All right. Good job.
Hi, my name's Jeff Hubbard. I'm 30 years plus resident of Huntington Beach. I live in the Seagate community. I'm a charter board member there. I've served the board for 23-plus years. Seagate, as you all well know, is 900-plus homes, and we're immediately adjacent to the overlay, the proposed overlay. Their houses range from a million and a half to three and a half million dollars. We allocate a substantial amount of money towards landscape. If, I know you said you drove by, but I encourage you all to drive through our community and look at, we probably have the best landscape, you know, in any of the communities. A lot of pride there. We have taken advantage of the sod removal programs religiously. We've eliminated a lot of sod to help conserve water for the community, and we all recognize that you're in a predicament right now about where to find lots to put 13,000 units. It's, it's an enormous project for you, and we want to work with you. So generally, I believe that our board is in favor of option three, provided we have some modifications like you guys talked about. We would be in favor of completely eliminating parcel 393 and 394 entirely from this overlay. It's on the north side of Ernest. It's not contiguous to the rest of it. If you look at our communities, Sherwood Community Association is the largest of the five homeowner associations that incorporate Seagate, and Sherwood encompasses an entire city block, except this little piece of property, it's like 1.6 acres, which you guys are proposing to, to change the zoning on, and we want you to just leave it alone and eliminate that from the overlay, and just honor the Holly Seacliff seven units per acre as it is now. And the second request would, like you mentioned before, was to honor the no overnight parking. Just keep it going, and even after construction, that you maintain that, and that we limit the development to three stories within 100 feet of Ernest, and no rooftops or balconies within 300, or within 100 feet of Ernest Avenue. So I think, I think our board empathizes with your guys' position, and we think these requests are reasonable and will minimize the effects on our neighbor and community. So please keep in mind that, I'm sure these people will all agree, that Huntington Seacliff is the crown jewel of Huntington Beach housing. It's the finest area in the whole city. So please be mindful...
Thank you.
...and not compromise everything we've worked so hard for, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Mickey Golden, and I live in Peninsula Park. I'm against the Holly Seacliff overlay south of Garfield with the 70 units per acre, especially because of the parking situation. Since the state allows less parking per unit in affordable housing, have you considered amending the Huntington Beach parking code to require more spaces per unit to even out the parking situation? We could require all new housing of three or more stories to have two spaces per bedroom, for two bedrooms, and three spaces for three bedrooms, and guest parking could increase. Or we could require all high-density buildings to have an extra street around them that has a set number of spaces. Also, has anyone thought of requiring developers to build less expensive apartments that low and moderate income residents can actually afford? Higher-density apartments like Bellatera and Beash and Ocean are pretty luxurious. The listed amenities are air conditioning, granite or quartz countertops, stainless steel appliances, washer and dryer in unit, pool, fitness center, club room, and conference room. I certainly didn't have these amenities in my starter houses. We don't need to vote on these issues until we have exhausted all efforts at alternatives. I know the planning commission thinks they have given ample notice to the residents, but I disagree. You have had nine outreach events on Zoom, mainly advertised on social media, on which many of us do not use. Also, you had one public event in Oakview Neighborhood, which was advertised by door flyers. Why is it not important to notify the Seacliff residents who will be mostly affected by this? Years ago, when I lived in Upper Seacliff, we had many notices about the Seacliff Center, along with the Holly Seacliff, what they were building. I believe the census states that 19% of residents are over age 65. Why were they not giving rid to notice? If you take out children, seniors are almost one-third of the population, and many have limited knowledge of computers. How is this fair to them? I'm not a senior, and I was not familiar with social media sites. I would like to know more about options five and six. Option five spreads out the units over larger space with the same number of units, which could work out better. Option six is using the city hall area. Since coming to the city hall four times in the last two weeks during the day, I'm amazed at the underutilization of this building. Each time, I was able to park in the fourth or fifth space. The lobby has a long hallway until you get to the front desk. I couldn't see how many people were behind the desk, but it was very quiet. On the third floor, there were about six offices along the windows, but only one was being occupied. The room behind the counters had room for about eight people, but I never saw more than two or three working at a time. Employees were walking in and outdoors, but the long hallways provided much wasted space. The basement was a big area with no one down there. Maybe this already-built building would be a perfect place for more residents, and there's a lot of parking available, but option six would take longer to approve. There's also mention of using the dwindling outdoor malls, Peters Landing and Huntington Harbor Mall, as a mixed-use space, but it was never considered, since it would need coastal commission approval. Therefore, it took longer to approve. I wonder if the residents knew that once the density is approved, that's it. The developers can't build less units, even if they wanted to. The city will not approve less-dense plans. A developer in Bellatera wanted to build medium-density townhomes on a high-density area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, planning commission. My name is Teresa Holloway. I have attended, I think, all the meetings and study session on this topic. I am from the Edwards Hill area, and I am urging you to vote for options two or three. We do, as the last gentleman said, we do understand your predicament, and we know that this is mandated by the state, which puts you all in a position of having to make some hard decisions, and we realize that this is kind of a battle that we need to fight within our own city to keep the quality of life and the beauty that we all love so My personal feeling is that the buffer that you've allowed is too large. I think we need to just give the state what they want. At the study session, there were some great comments about that. I've also done, like the last lady, I've done a few, a little bit of research myself, and I understand that a lot of the apartment buildings in the area are not even at capacity right now. I was at the meeting last night and saw that the trailer home is being threatened. Those people are low-income, so I don't understand why there isn't room for more people that's already built or already here. So again, I urge you to vote for two or three. I think that there are other more suitable areas in the city. I know that the state instructs you to spread the density out a little more throughout the city, so I urge you to do that. Vote for two and three, and then we'd like to see some modifications next year. I know that the new city council is interested in that as well. Thank you for your time.
Okay, can the following people please come down? Nikki Wetzel, Davida Milo, John Severini, Lauren Sire, and Cindy Modus.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Dennis Holloway, and it's my wife, so I'm also a member of the community. You know, when we, the Seagate people are in the same position that we were on October 11th, whereas we got wind of this stuff a little bit earlier, so I feel for them a great deal. I personally believe that, I see that SP7's been removed. I think SP9 should be removed. Those two areas there, like somebody said, are the crown jewels of Huntington Beach. They should really have the type of housing that they deserve, and I don't think what's being proposed provides that. I know that you guys have done a lot of work by removing the stuff that you have and moving things around, because you guys, your backs up against the wall. You have to do something, or the state, as Shirley said, can come in and make some pretty drastic changes. And that's too bad. It's too bad that it's taken this long for us to get to this point, and that kind of bums me out as a, as a member of this community. So I think it'd be great if you could remove those and find other places to go, but if you can't, I think it'd be a good idea to vote on the things that you have in front of you with the options of being able to go back at a later date and maybe make amendments to it. The other thing I think that the Seagate people don't, haven't heard much about yet is the, once the developer gets into these spots, they don't have to necessarily follow the city rules. I know that if you get the state's approval, that you have a better chance of...
I know that if you get the state's approval, that you have a better chance of trying to control the developer, but the developers don't have to listen to the height requirements. They don't have to listen to parking. And that creates a big problem that you guys can't do anything about. Lastly, you mentioned the schools hadn't gotten back to you. Well, my daughter just graduated from Huntington High, just like I did back in the 1980s, early 80s. And she had to go through a guidance counselor situation where she was one of 1,000 kids for one guidance counselor. They've got 4,000 kids there and one guidance counselor for each grade. So we go adding more kids to it, it's going to impact it even worse. So that's a scary situation, that the people coming up behind us don't have the adequate means to get a good education. So thank you very much, and good luck to you guys.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I should say, Mr. Perkins and council. My name is Carl Temple. I'm a 30-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm a resident of Seagate. I'm an original owner, actually, in Seagate from 1997. I'm here today to reinforce the concerns and the things that you've heard earlier today regarding the parcels and the lots 393 and 394. I live on Stratton Lane. I'm within a very close area of the Ernest Avenue area. If you look at the border of the Seagate neighborhood, it's roughly a six-foot wall, and across from the backyards for neighbors that butt up against Ernest, it's less than 70 feet. And so, you know, proposing, you know, even a 35, you know, units per acre environment there is going to greatly impact not only the neighbors on my street, but those neighbors that are just as close. It's not right, and I agree with the last speaker. I mean, if there's a path to just eliminate SP 9 as part of option three, we would be ecstatic, and we would greatly support your decision in that way. If there has to be some overlay in SP 9, we would ask that you go back to what's in place at the Holly Seacliff specific plan, and that's seven. And that's also units per acre, and that's consistent with the Seagate neighborhood and obviously other neighborhoods that are close by. So I appreciate your time and courtesy. You know, we understand the issues and the things that are faced, but this is an area that just, it just doesn't fit for what the city's trying to accomplish, and it's going to greatly impact the quality of life, traffic, and other kinds of things in those areas. It's just too much, but thank you very much.
Good evening, Chair Perkins, members of the commission. My name's Nikki Wetzel. I am a resident 20 years. My home backs Ernest Drive professionally. I've been a planner for 25 years, a professional city planner, and I understand the position that you all are in. I understand the position staff's, and I completely agree. In an ideal world, there would be no density, provided at all in SP 9, the Holly Seacliff specific plan calls for, right now, 25 dwelling units per acre, and I would love, that was the plan I read when I bought, and my neighbors tell me they did too, and to go up to seven is absolutely ridiculous, in my opinion. It never should have been ever placed there. Having said that, I understand the position you're in. I do understand the consequences of not having, potential consequences of not having a certified housing element. So I support option three. If there has to be density, it puts it closer to the services, the Seacliff Shopping Center and the Ralph Shopping Center. I still don't love it, but I understand that. What I did not hear, thank you Commissioner Scandura, when you asked staff about the things, items in the Seagate level letter, staff did not respond to lots 393 and 394, reverting to seven dwelling units per acre. And myself and my neighbors were incredibly frustrated that we sat for five hours at a city council meeting and did not get to address the council before they deliberated to talk about our issues, even though we were there. Mike Posey opened the door for me. I gave him the first speaker card. I wasn't able to speak until after 6:00 PM or 5:00 PM, when they were in regular session, and they did not get to hear us talk about limiting, prohibiting roof decks 100 feet off of Ernest and prohibiting balconies off 100 feet off of Ernest. So I appreciate you bringing those things up tonight. I would request objective design standards that do prohibit balconies and roof decks within 100 feet of Ernest Drive, and also that there's absolutely no way that lots 393 and 394 should be anything more than seven dwelling units per acre. That is what the Holly Seacliff specific plan shows for them now, and that is what they should be. There should be no way that, you should look over your six-foot-high wall at 35 dwelling units per acre. So those are my comments. I do appreciate your time this evening.
My name is Davida Milo. I've lived in Huntington Beach for 25 years, and I've been living in Seagate for the past 18 years. Like Nikki mentioned, when we moved in, we were given the plan that designated the 25 dwelling units per acre, and our community is at seven dwelling units per acre. So I would echo much of what Nikki said, that I understand that our city and all cities in California are in a tough position and feel it's inevitable that we have to comply with the state mandate. I would oppose efforts to delay that, because I think it puts us in financial and legal risk to do so. So I just want to add my voice to support option three with amendments that include the comments from the Seagate community that have been received by this committee. And again, as Nikki described, the small carve-out of 393 and 394, which is essentially inside our neighborhood border, should be retained at seven dwellings per unit, and we need to prohibit balconies and rooftops within 100 feet of Ernest because of the dramatic change in character that would bring about to have something higher looking right over into single-family, two-story homes. I would hope there's a way for the city and the plans we approved to require that parking be accommodated by any developer at an adequate level for the resident capacity, so they'd be able to park within the development itself, because even though I understand parking restrictions may not be the purview of this committee, it's imperative that there not be overnight parking on Ernest so that it doesn't cause tremendous problems for the communities that are inside those developments. So that sums up my comments. I appreciate your time and appreciate your effort on this difficult task.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name's Laura Sire. I am an almost 60-year resident of Huntington Beach, so I've seen it go through, I've seen the city go through a lot of changes, and it is still changing, I think, and that's why we're here tonight. But I mainly just wanted to, I really wanted to thank the staff, Nicole, Ursula, Jennifer, and the consultants, who have worked so hard on this housing element. Oh, I'm also a member of, I forgot to mention, a very proud member of Homeless United Huntington Beach, and I'm just really learning from these folks over here, people like Shirley. But anyway, thanks so much to the city staff for all of their hard work and their patience. I mean, they, six drafts, and now they've had to revise and edit again. And I'm just hoping that you will take a vote. I do support option three, what is presented tonight. It was very encouraging to hear Jennifer say that this has been run by the state and that they will probably go with it. So it's very complicated, but time is of the essence, and I think the best thing to do is to please pass it on to the city council. As Mr. Scandura said, this is not a mandate either. It's just not. It's like, he said at one of the meetings, it's like setting the table. So it's, you know, it's not like it's going to happen overnight, like, anyway, that's all. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, can the following people please come down? Jenny Braithwaite, Pat Goodman, Robert Fisher, Kelly Kay, and Sherry Atkinson.
Hi, I'm John Severini. Good evening. I'm glad to have an opportunity just to share a couple of my comments. I'm a 17-year resident of Huntington Beach. I love living here. I think it's a great place to be. My wife and I, in staying, being here for 17 years, we lived downtown on Olive and 22nd, and for the last year, we've really moved ahead and wanted to pursue our dreams and live in the Edwards Hill area. We've been driving through it and talking with our real estate agent for the last seven or eight months, and very much looking forward to relocating to this area, until we saw the signs a few months ago that caught us by surprise, and that was talking about all of the things and the proposed changes for this area, and we wanted to become a little bit more informed of what was going on, what was being proposed. I've got a lot to learn. I admire all of the details that you all have to deal with, and I know it's a tough situation. But it just occurred to me that the very extreme regulations and proposals are going to so radically change the complete dynamics, feeling, look, existence of an area that has a true personality to it. And if you take a look at, of course, all the things we need for infrastructure, that's one thing, but when we look at why we want to live in Edwards Hill, we looked at other areas. We looked at other beach communities. We looked at areas up in Anaheim Hills and Yorba Linda and Costa Mesa, and on and on and on, and we kept coming back to Edwards Hill going, so why are we so attracted to this place? And it occurred to us that it's the whole feeling, the structure, the look, the way it moves, the traffic, everything works so well that it really does look and feel to us something radically different. The gentleman earlier talked about the crown jewel. It really is, to me, the crown jewel of this city, and it is something that is so very different from all the other communities that we've looked at, thinking about where our next home is going to be. So I'm just saying that, you know, we want to be here in Huntington Beach. We think that Edwards Hill is so unique. We think that there are some concerns with going so far and beyond what it really is capable of handling without losing its feeling and that crown jewel look, and I think we've got a unique opportunity here to take it some other looks and see what we can do as an alternative to keep the integrity, the feeling, the look, the specialness of Edwards Hill. And I would just implore you to do everything you can possibly can to retain its beauty and not go to the extreme in the levels that are going to radically change this so that it really loses its whole personality, its feeling, its infrastructure, and radically changes an area that really is the crown jewel of Huntington Beach. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Cindy Modus, and I'm a third-generation citizen of Huntington, the city of Huntington Beach, and I just wanted to come to this meeting because this is the first knowledge, since I saw the poster, that, of these plans. I feel like whatever has transpired, the general public really didn't know what was going on, and I'm not part of Seacliff. I live downtown Huntington Beach, and all of this overlay and the new, the state of California is mandating for us to pick spots so that we can incorporate 13,000 new people coming into our city, times, I mean, households, to me, just blows my mind. I did read the environmental impact report, and just even with the projection of that many units coming into our city, it's, we don't, we're not ready for this. We're already limited on our electricity, our water, traffic, schools, streets. This is going to be a very hardship on our city, and the, if you look around at the allocation the state has given to, let's say, the surrounding cities of Newport Beach, Seal Beach, and all that, I don't, first of all, I'm late to the party, so I don't know why our city gets that many assigned to us versus the other cities had such a low rate of housing that is mandated in their city. I mean, if we take into consideration what this whole thing is going to do to us, it's increasing the population of our city of over, like, a fourth. It's like a little country now coming into our city in a very short time. So I just wanted to say I'm opposed to the denseness of the housing units. I understand you have to make decisions, and I guess I'm just opposing the high-density housing, and I know it's hard for you to, you've got to make a decision. And I agree with the people that are here, trying to maintain the flow, and the look of our city is very important to me, and I hope that you make your decision, keeping that in mind. Thank you.
Good evening, Huntington Beach Planning Commission. I, Jenny Braithwaite, would like first to thank you for making accommodations which do protect the autonomy, beauty, and opportunities offered by our city. Now, how would a housing element protect our autonomy? If we do not adopt a certified housing element very soon, the court can issue fines up to $100,000 per month. We could be disqualified from receiving federal and state funds. The courts can mandate compliance, suspend local zoning power, and provide a moratorium on all future building permits, likely to say your power might diminish. So why am I pointing out all the dangers of voting no? Do I represent special interests? Perhaps those land developers? I do confess, I represent very special interests, my own interests. You see, I care about the quality of life in Huntington Beach. I have two adorable grandsons, and I'd like for them to be able to afford to live in this city if they choose. Perhaps you as well have younger family members, and you'd like them to be able to live here as you reach those golden years. Simply planting the seeds for the construction of 13,000 units might not be a bad thing, especially with approximately 5,500 units of very low and low-income housing. Some of our speakers have expressed reasonable concern over the safety of our students going to school on busy streets, but don't forget that we have close to 1,000 Huntington Beach students who are classified as homeless. What about them? I'd like to compliment the staff of Huntington Beach City, Jennifer Villa Senor, Ursula Reynosa, as well as Nicole Obey, for writing six drafts and addressing many different issues raised by HCD. They have behaved professionally, worked hard to comply with the law and represent the interests of the city at large. The housing element simply plants the seeds for future residential growth, regardless of the economic climate that we may face. There is nothing to indicate that all the seeds will grow into actual buildings. Building more housing is not a red or blue issue. It simply makes sense. We need to enforce the law and follow the law, adopt the housing element, and continue to protect the autonomy, opportunities, and most importantly, the quality of life for all residents of Huntington Beach. Thank you for voting yes on option three of the housing element.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Chair Perkins, I'm Pat Goodman, and I'm an original owner, homeowner, in Seagate, and I support the agenda items before you tonight and hope that you'll approve them, mostly because of my concern for being in default or not having an approved housing element in place. I think it's reckless and not good for our economy and, just in general, our city. And I too would like to thank the staff. I've been looking at this over the last couple of years. By no means an expert, I always learn something new and appreciate the presentations by staff, and I'll continue to learn things. I started out with a desire to try to address the homeless issue and at least just to be a voice for affordable housing, how important it is to our city, the safety of our city, and maintaining our property values. It does support. It does support improved or property values. There's no research that says that property values decline or crime goes up. So I would just encourage you to vote for these agenda items before you tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Please go ahead. Start by stating your name, please.
Okay. My name is Sherri Atkinson, and I'm a resident for about 44 years. And if I fumble, I hadn't planned to speak tonight. So I'm just kind of winging it. But I do encourage you to accept the revised housing element, but at the same time to work with the community and to address their concerns. People are concerned about the effects, you know, on their community. And I believe that if we accept the housing element, which I encourage you to do, that you will work with our community and their concerns. People have stated this, but there are truly serious and negative consequences from the state if we don't accept, if we don't have a housing element. We have resisted it. We have had lawsuits. We've had appeals. The bottom line is, we have to develop, accept the housing element, approve it, and work with the community. Sometimes we don't want things to happen because of fear. You know, we think of all of the things that could happen, and I have seen the proposed plans, and they look really good. We need to look at the benefits to our community. I think it's like 82% of the people that work here cannot afford to live here. The majority of our kids, unless we help them, cannot live here. There are benefits to having affordable housing in our community. And I've been here 44 years, and I have seen change. But that's part of life. We can't hold on to the way things were many years ago. We've got to move forward, go with change, and make it work for us. And I want to thank Ursula, Nicole, Jennifer. They have been working on this for two years. There's been a lot of work, so I want to say thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Cades, and I am a resident of Huntington Beach and part of the Seagate Community Association. I have lived in Huntington Beach for approximately 20 years. I'm here tonight to speak against the proposed high-density developments around the communities which are part of the Seagate Community Association. The proposed developments which go against the existing density when compared to the homes in the Seagate community and would create congestion and traffic in areas that contain predominantly single-family housing. The proposed high-density developments in and around those areas would overwhelm the Seagate community and the areas and communities that are part of the Seagate Community Association where I live. I urge you to reconsider the proposed high-density developments in those areas and keep Huntington Beach the city we all know and love. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Robert Fisher. I've lived in Huntington Beach for 25-plus years. I've been a renter here, and I'm now an owner of my own home. I live in the Hope View Track, which is close to Edwards Hill and Seagate. And respect to the chair and respect to the committee and the staff. First time I ever heard of this thing was a few days ago, yeah? And I think I'm a pretty informed Huntington Beach citizen. But the details of this, sorry if you've been working on it for two years, haven't been properly distributed to the citizens of the city. And I realize that you might think that 300 yards or 300 feet is the right amount of space, but everyone in Huntington Beach is going to be affected by this, every single citizen. Zoning issues are one of the cores of keeping your city the way you want to keep it and keeping your city organized by economics, by housing, by different things, right? So we can't be told by the state that you have to do this and then go scrambling around picking different lots to put high-density housing on without talking to the citizens that live here. So I believe one of the things that we did when we voted was to vote against this kind of nonsense and vote against having a city council that doesn't keep its citizens informed of things that affect their property values. So we're talking about rushing something through from where I'm sitting that hasn't been properly noticed to the entire city. I realize that there may be some penalties that are being threatened by our governor, but I believe we have a pretty darn-good attorney that represents our city. And, you know, I told these ladies behind me, not too many people like me anymore. I don't really care. I'm old enough to not care. I'm working on my image, okay? But the, this whole business about trying to rush this through before the next city council gets seated is absurd. It feels like it. It tastes like it. And I think it is like it, that we're trying to push this forward before we have the people that we voted into office to deal with this issue, both on a legal basis and as a city council by choosing the properties that are appropriate if we are forced to do this plan. We choose properties that are appropriate for these seeds when we are forced to make that decision and not a moment before. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so that was our last speaker, so I am closing the public hearing part of this meeting. We'll move on to staff deliberations. So do I have any commissioners that would like to open up the discussion? And by the way, we can use the view speakers button now, now that my queue has been cleared out. So we have John Skandura. Go ahead.
Chair and commissioners, I just wanted to bring up that you may also ask questions of staff again, based on items that you have heard before you want to deliberate, if you choose.
Thank you. Go ahead. Commissioner Skandura.
And that's exactly what I'm going to do. Okay, I just want to clarify just on the height requirements and the allowable heights in these homes, units, complexes within the affordable housing overlay, and that's what's being proposed, especially in the SP9 area. Are they, regardless of the density, the 35 or 60 or 70 or whatever units per acre, are they still limited to 30, well, 30 feet without a conditional use permit, 35 feet with a conditional use permit?
The height limit in SP9 for the areas north of Garfield would be limited to a 35-foot height limit. The height limits for the parcels included in SP9 overlay south of Garfield would be limited to four stories. So the 35-foot height limit would be equivalent to two to three stories.
Yeah. And then four-story, so three stories is about 30 to 35 feet, four stories is about 40 to 45 feet.
Correct.
And then, some of the speakers asked about, well, you know, why don't we just remove Parcels 393 and 394? Now, I noticed that, well, the property, I think the property, the two parcels total about one and a half acres, maybe a little bit more. And that would equate to about, oh, 53, 54 units if they were developed out at their maximum capacity. If we removed those two parcels, how much, what kind of impact would that have on our, well, you know, on our RENA numbers? Especially because, and this is assuming that 20% of those units are affordable, so that's 11.
The overall impact would be, we would still be able to meet our RENA requirements in every income category, including the low-income category. There would be a reduction in lower-income units that are considered for those sites, but we would still be able to meet the RENA. We just wouldn't have as big of a buffer.
Okay. Yeah. Because having heard what the residents are saying, and I think also I'm familiar with that property and also what's on there, and basically, any kind of development is going to require significant remediation. And so any kind of developer who goes in there, whether they rent out at seven units per acre or 52 units total or whatever, I mean, they're going to have a hard time making that kind of development pencil out. So at some point, I'd like to propose that we remove those two parcels from this housing unit, housing element update.
Yeah, I have a question regarding the, some of the speakers had mentioned about balconies and roof decks. This is regarding the Seagate community. I know in the development that we approved for Newland and, what's that, Talbert, yes. We did something similar there, where we did kind of have some limitations as to where windows would go so they wouldn't be overseeing the single-family homes. Is there something we could do here, or is it already kind of stipulated? Maybe something like the Design Review Board could approve or...
Well, I do want to point out that I think the request was to limit balconies within 100 feet
Correct.
of Ernest. I'm not sure if they're meaning from the north side or the south side, but the development standards that are proposed and exist in, for the RH overlay would effectively provide 100 feet from the property line of the southernmost tract in Seagate to the property line of, well, the nearest units that would be built under the RH standards. And that would be due to the landscape setback requirements, the right-of-way along Ernest Drive, which is 60 feet, a 15-foot landscape setback requirement in the overlay, as well as a 10-foot street-side setback, and an additional 10-foot upper-story setback, which combined gives about 105 feet from units to property line on the north side of Ernest Drive.
Okay. And the staff have the income limits for very low versus low readily available for the RENA?
So it's based on the area median income, so that gets updated every year.
Yeah.
Low is up to 50% of the area median income, and very low is up to 30%.
And I think the slide on the presentation showed what the area median income is.
Yeah. They're actually, very low is 50%, low is 80%, 30% is extremely low income.
Yeah, my apologies. Said it backwards.
Do we have kind of like a figure that you could point out how much that means in actual dollars? For example, 50% AMI means
Yeah, I just...
salary of $67,000.
Yeah, just put it up. So very low income in order to qualify, this is for a family of four, very low income would be up to $67,000. A low-income household for a family of four is making up to $108,000 in 2022.
Okay. And these income limits most likely will go up in 2023, correct?
Yeah, that's been the trend in the past few years.
So if we certify the housing element today, would these numbers stay, or they would kind of fluctuate along with the median income every year?
The income limits are updated every year.
Okay, so it's based off of the development that happens in that particular year? Okay.
Yes.
I think that's it for me right now. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair Costner Gilvan.
I just wanted to ask about the buffer, so that's required by HCD, correct? And I think we're, with this option three, we're at around a 10% buffer, a little bit higher. But I, I think HCD requires, they don't require, they usually prefer a bigger buffer. Could you speak on that?
Yeah, so they do look for a 15% to 30% buffer. We do have a very high buffer on the moderate and above-moderate income categories. The low-income category, our buffer is much smaller. The current buffer with option three is about 10 and 1/2%. And that's reduced from the previous version that the Planning Commission reviewed in October 11th. That was about an 11 and 1/2% buffer on the low income. So option three is reducing that buffer to about 10.4%.
Okay. And then, could you go into the consequences, again, of not having a substantially compliant housing element?
Yes, so there are many consequences. The state has a lot of authority when it comes to any jurisdiction that has a non-compliant housing element or an uncertified housing element. It can range from things like fines, there can be lawsuits filed, you know, individuals can sue, third parties can sue, developers can sue. There's also, you're subject to something called builder's remedy projects, which means someone can submit a development project that doesn't comply with the general plan or zoning, and that project is vested, basically, if they submit, while the city does not have a compliant housing element. Also, state can take away our land use authority, our permitting authority. We won't be able, we wouldn't, potentially would not be able to issue building permits. These are just a few of the things.
Okay. And then, the changes for option three that we're looking at, the overall changes to SP9 are actually a reduction in the proposed density that we initially had, is that right?
Yes, for the area north of Garfield.
Right.
Yes.
And we've been proposing that for, I believe, since July. SP9 has been included in the housing element, right?
The area has been in the housing element since the first draft in October.
Okay. Thank you.
October 21.
2021. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Adam.
Thank you. So one of my questions was about the 100-foot buffer, which, Jennifer, thank you for answering that. I think that clarifies it for me. Several speakers, it seems that many of you understand the issue at hand and the requirement that we're in for the city to approve, to approve a housing element. So if we were to approve, Planning Commission approves it tonight, and City Council approves it later in the month, how easy is it to just make modifications in 2023 that's been suggested by folks? Is it just City Council next year can do whatever they want? Or is it, I mean, I'm trying to understand, it's just been brought up, and I want to, I guess, make sure I understand.
Yeah, so...
It sounds easy to just make changes, but to me, I feel like it's probably more difficult than that, but I...
Well, it's easy to, I would say it's easy to be directed to make changes. So if the direction from City Council is to make amendments to a housing element that's adopted, they can do that at any time. And it's up to a majority of the City Council to provide that direction to staff. How those changes get made, it would be more dependent upon whatever the direction is and how challenging it is to meet that direction.
Do those have to go be approved by the state again?
Yes. If we make amendments to the housing element, we would then have to submit it to the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ray.
Yes, I'm going to ask staff to crunch some numbers for me real quick. On the, on the buffer that we have between the low income and very low income, luckily you already had the number on with the existing plan is, which is 10.4% buffer?
Yes.
I'd be, pardon me?
Sorry. It's about 11% for the
I'm sorry, for the proposed.
Version from October. Okay. The proposed, proposed option three buffer is about 10.47%
Okay.
on the lower income.
Exactly. Now, it was mentioned with Commissioner Skandura is that it's approximately 51 units if, for Parcels 393 and 394 and the lower income?
No, that, I think that's overall. I think the question you're getting to is what would the buffer be at the low income with the removal of those sites?
That is correct.
I think it's about 10.1, 10.2.
10.2%.
So we're still at a 10.1 to 10.2% buffer with the removal of those two parcels out of this plan?
Correct.
Of this proposal?
Can I ask a follow-up? Oh, sorry, when you're done.
Go ahead, and I'll circle back to something else.
I was just, so, sorry, Commissioner Ray. If there's buffers required for each category, are you triggered to go back, SEQA and this whole process if one of them has exceeded, or one of them is, your buffer runs out? or one of them is, your buffer runs out?
So if we no longer have a buffer, then the next time we don't have a buffer, let's say, because sites get developed with something other than, in the overlay, with something other than residential, or it gets developed at a capacity with number of units lower than what we projected in the housing element, as that lowers the buffer, eventually you get to a point where your number of units that you can accommodate is lower than the arena target. At that point, we're what's called in a no-net-loss situation, and that's where you would be subject to HCD decertifying your housing element and requiring that you go back through the process through the planning commission and city council to, to add more units, more sites, more capacity.
That's for any category. It's not a combined buffer. It's for each category.
It's for each category. The net, no net loss is for each income category. Yes, important point.
All right.
Yeah, I just want to note though, that for the other categories, we exceed, for the, the lowest income, it's 10% buffer, and for the higher income categories, it's a much larger buffer, correct?
Yeah, I think in moderate, we're somewhere in the low 20s in our buffer, and then in the market rate, we're above 50%.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I believe we were already decertified previously a few years ago, and that resulted in a lawsuit, correct?
Yes, so in the previous cycle, the fifth cycle, we were decertified in 2015 as a result of some amendments we made to a specific plan, the Bejettinger specific plan, where the majority of our arena units were accommodated through that specific plan. Some amendments were made that resulted in a lowering of capacity in the specific plan, which essentially gave us that no-net-loss result, and we couldn't accommodate our arena number anymore, overall. So back then, no net loss was overall, and we couldn't accommodate our arena anymore, so we were decertified. And then in 2019, we were, we remained decertified for several years, and in 2019, we were sued by the state of California. And that was as a result of some newer legislation that was passed in 2017, which provided HCD with enforcement authority and also the ability to refer non-compliant cities to the attorney general.
Thank you.
Okay, and then back to Commissioner Ray.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just seeing that, in my view, under this and any revisions that we may be considering, we're still in excess of the requirement. So we're not in, kind of in the same situation as before. The buffer would be changing from only 10.4% to 10.2% roughly, which is pretty immaterial. And so I think I would be more amenable to make, adopting this proposal, but removing those two parcels, 393 and 394, from the plan. And, and one other thing I did, I did want to mention, I, I want us to be able to approve something tonight. But I, as I mentioned at, at the last planning commission meeting, I'll, I'll say it again, I would also want to encourage the city council, including the incoming city council, to challenge the arena numbers. And I understand that we're actually in a better position to challenge those numbers. Understand we're in a better position to challenge those numbers with an approved housing element. So those are my comments for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, one last question. I know that there's 13,368 units in the overall housing element. However, we do have some that are already in the pipeline, right? So what is our current number that we currently stand?
It's 1,755 units that are included in the pending and approved projects.
Okay, because I read in one of the drafts, attachments that we had, that we, that the number is roughly 11,000 units that we have. Can you clarify?
Yeah, so what that means is, and I think there's probably the EIR.
Yeah.
When we were doing the EIR, we subtracted the projects that had been pending approved because they already had gone through a sequel process from the number that we had to study in the EIR, which essentially subtracted those, those approved slash pending projects.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, we're going to move on to Commissioner Skandura, but before I do that, I do, I want to just go on record that I am also supportive of moving 393 and 394.
Okay, and just, just some comments, and then I'll, then I'll make a motion, then I'll make a motion. Needless to say, I don't think anybody here on the planning commission or on city council and even among the staff are excited about trying to find properties for 13,368 units. I mean, I think everybody agrees that, you know, this is an ambitious, if not unreasonable mandate on the part of the state. Nonetheless, it's grounded in state law. They have a lot of case law and precedents behind them, and it's very, very difficult to challenge the state on this. And more than anything, if we don't have a housing element that meets the goals, meets this 13,368 goal, there could be some major penalties for us. It's very sad that we have to meet these enormous numbers when you consider the last housing element update. We only had to find 1,350, some odd, about 1,350 housing areas, and then before that, our housing units, and then before, before that, it was about 2,500. So, you know, we have, we have quite a bit. And so I, I really have to commend the staff, all of the staff for the hard work that they've done trying to, trying to make this square peg fit into the round hole. And I think, you know, I think they got it right the last time, but I think they have it right, they have it right this time. Just a couple of comments, and just to remind, just some of the things, a couple of things I said in the last meeting, and that is, well, especially now that the three properties that were subject to rezone are now pulled out of this housing element, what is left are all the other properties are subject to the affordable housing overlay. And that affordable housing overlay, number one, applies only if the developer wants to put in more, at least 20% affordable units. If it's less than 20% affordable units, they don't, they don't get to take advantage of that, that affordable housing overlay. So it's going to be interesting to see how many developers are going to be able to ma, make all of this pencil out. Secondly, the base zoning is always going to apply. So assuming if we were to keep, you know, parcels 393 and 394 in, and this is just one example out of, I forget how many hundred, about 400 parcels in this housing element. Yes, they would still be able to develop a seven units per acre, but if it stayed in the affordable housing overlay, then they, then they would have the option of a higher density. Now, the other important thing about the housing, the affordable housing overlay is it only applies until January 1st, 2029, correct?
I think it's 20, January 1st, 2030.
2030, okay, 2030. So that's, because this is the 2021 to 2029 housing element. So if, if they're not able to develop, use the affordable housing overlay by January 1st, 2030, then the affordable housing overlay disappears. And, and so it, it reverts back to the base zoning. So we're going to see how many of these properties are going to actually wind up undergoing the kind of development under the affordable housing overlay. I think, and I think some of the speakers, you know, I think, got to this, but I, I think we have, we have to remember the importance of the housing element. And there's a lot of parts of the housing element, including, including homelessness and services to seniors and quite a number of other things, but probably the biggest element is providing housing for our workforce. The problem is, we just don't have enough housing for our workforce. What's happening is people who are in my generation, which is the baby boom generation, the largest generation ever in this country's history, are now retiring. But rather than moving to Florida or Arizona or some, some retirement community, they're staying put in their house. And I admit, I'm one of those. I'm not going anywhere. I retired, but I'm not going anywhere. But, and that's fine, except it means we just have less and less houses for the workforce that's coming in to replace all those peoples that, all those people who are retiring. And, and those people who do, do take these jobs, they just simply can't find housing in Huntington Beach or anywhere nearby. If they do find housing, it's often two or three hours away, and invariably what they're going to do is, after a certain amount of time, they're going to say, I'm done with this. I'm either taking a job near where I live, or I'm just moving out of state. And that becomes, in addition to the social issue, it also becomes a very major, major economic issue. One of the unfortunate comments I heard at the last meeting, and that's when I talked about this, about affordable housing, is I heard one person get up and say, well, we don't want these people. Who are those people? Who are these people? They're skilled and unskilled workers. They're service workers. They're technical workers. They're professionals, including healthcare professionals. I have a daughter that's going into the healthcare field. They're entrepreneurs and business people who create the jobs and drive our economy. And when they can't find housing, they go elsewhere and our economy suffers. And when our economy suffers, we suffer. So that's probably, that's the nexus here. That, that's what's at stake here. We have a new city council that's coming in in a couple of weeks. There's going to be enormous pressure upon them to just, assuming the, our, the current city council approves this housing element, there's going to be enormous pressure on them to rescind this housing element. And that would be a major, major mistake, because without an approved housing element, a certified housing element, we then become subject to numerous sanctions, which have already been mentioned. But one of them is losing local land use authority. Imagine having to go get a building permit from some bureaucrat in Sacramento, or Sacramento make, contracted to some city elsewhere, so having to go to that city. We could be subject to penalties of $100,000 per month. That adds up the longer we don't have a certified housing element. And then we lose money for state grants, among them include homeless. And I knew, know that the new city council members are very concerned and want to do something about the homeless problem. So above all, don't, 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 don't rescind this housing element. You know, there's also a lot of people saying, go ahead, we need to sue the state, we need to sue the state, challenge these numbers. That's fine, as long as they don't pull the housing element. Because if they pull the housing element, then all of those penalties and fines apply, and those would stay in place until that litigation is resolved, which could be years away. So that's just a little bit of background. But with that, I'm prepared to make the motion.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add on to your statement. So the, you know, this, this was something we discussed in our deliberations when we approved the housing element last time it came around. And there was an audit of, well, first of all, there was a process for appealing the numbers that were assigned to Huntington Beach, and the city did go through that process with the city attorney. And one of the things that came back was, through an audit, was that our numbers were much lower than what we probably should have received compared to other cities in the local area. And so one of the concerns is when you go and, if we, if the city decides to go and pursue this further in the future and fight it, we could open ourselves up to the possibility of getting much higher numbers than what we have for housing right now. So there is a risk to doing that. So I do think it's important for the public to understand that part of it as well in terms of how we're voting on the commission and how you may see council members vote on city council as well. So, okay, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, just to closing off, I do want to thank Commissioner Skandura for his comments. I think I second everything that he said. And I also want to go on record on making sure that we remove site 393 and 394, as it's not even going to affect overall the housing element. With, with that being said, I myself, I myself, I'm a strong proponent of affordable housing, especially in the very low and low income. For those that don't know the, the history of Huntington Beach with housing and low-income housing, and it's actually had a very robust program prior when we had a redevelopment agency. You can all look it up, easy Google. You can look at the properties that are around Huntington Beach that have currently affordable housing. If you look at the properties, they're properties in really good shape, mostly serving senior citizens. And as John Skandura mentioned, and if you look at the income levels, the very low income, $67,000, that's a working-class individual. The $108,000 for a family of four, that's two families, working class, two, two individuals and a family of four that are spending their money in Huntington Beach. Their, their kids are going to school in Huntington Beach, and that's overall good for our local economy. So I am a strong proponent of the housing element. And with that being said, I, I would like to second Mr. Skandura's motion after he
After he makes it.
After he makes it. So thank you very much. And also to staff, just for meeting with residents and making sure that you, you understand the concerns, and also the current, the current council who did that as well. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and by the way, before you make a motion, I just want to make sure all the other commissioners get a chance to weigh in. So go ahead, Commissioner Adam.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, 393 and 394, I won't, I'll be supportive of removing them and then keeping SP9 South as, as provided in the current plan. So I'm, I'm on board with that also.
Okay, any other comments from any of the other commissioners?
I'll be in support of the plan as well.
All right, okay.
Okay, before I make a motion, just some clarifying questions for the staff. So we're actually, I mean, some of these recommend, one of these recommended actions is coming out, and then some others are changing because we're taking out the two parcels, yes, because we're taking out the two parcels. So it looks like item number F, which is approving the RMH zoning, that is coming out. Am I correct?
Yes, that's zoning text amendment, I mean, zoning map amendment 22001.
Right.
Yeah, that would come out. There would also, in conjunction with that one coming out, there would be a modification to general plan amendment 22-001 to make sure that those sites come off the revised, the proposed general plan land use map.
Right, and I'm seeing that's item number C. We would have to modify that for removing. How about item B, the, the general plan amendment?
Item B would be the housing, are you talking about the housing element itself?
Yeah.
Document 21, general plan amendment 21003. That would just be, basically, you could include, modify it as, as, you could say, modify it as necessary to reflect the modifications to the recommended actions, the implementation actions.
Okay, so B and C are definitely going to get modified for the rezoning, or, yeah, for the rezoning. F is coming out. And then as far as the removal of parcels 393 and 394, that would also force a modification to item B, C, and
H.
H, there we go. So I hope I can keep all of that straight. And so, first motion is going to be to recommend approval of subsequent EIR number 22-002 with findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations by approving draft city council resolution number 22, 2022-63, and forward for city council consideration. So that's my motion.
Second.
Staff will take the vote.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question real quick before we
Go ahead.
Just a question for staff. I just want to confirm that what was called option six at the city council meeting regarding city-owned properties, we're not voting anything on that at, at this time?
No, you're not actually taking any actions on option six as it relates to arena site. We did include a program to study city-owned properties for future residential development, and that's captured in any action you take on general plan amendment 21003.
Okay, yeah, I remember it came up on this, the presentations. I just wanted to double check.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. So staff, take the vote.
Okay, we have six ayes. Commissioner Mandick is absent. Motion carries.
All right, one down, six to go. So, next motion is, is item B, which is to recommend approval of general plan amendment number 21-003 by approving draft city council resolution 2022-63. number 21-003 by approving draft City Council Resolution 2022-62, forward to City Council for consideration, with modifications to remove proposed RMH rezonings and to remove parcels 393 and 394.
Second?
We have six ayes. Commissioner Matic is absent, motion carries.
Okay, next one is to recommend approval of general plan amendment 22-001 by approving City Council Resolution that are in the attachments, with modifications to remove the RMH zoning and parcels 393 and 394.
I'll second that.
We have six ayes. Commissioner Matic is absent, motion carries.
Okay, and to verify with the staff, these next two items have nothing to do with the RMH rezoning or parcel 393, 394. That's D and E.
Correct.
Okay, so I'll recommend approval of zoning map amendment number 22-002 with findings and by approving draft ordinance number 4269.
I'll second. Commissioner Rodriguez? We have all ayes. Commissioner Matic is absent, motion carries.
Okay, next one will recommend approval, I will reckon, or motion to recommend approval of zoning text amendment 22-008 with findings and by approving draft ordinance number 4272.
Second?
We have six ayes. Commissioner Matic is absent, motion carries.
Okay, next one will recommend approval, I will reckon, or motion to recommend approval of zoning text amendment 22-008 with findings and by approving draft ordinance number 4272.
Second?
We have six ayes. Commissioner Matic is absent, motion carries.
Okay, there's no recommendation F, so the next motion will be to recommend approval of zoning text amendment number 22-009, which relates to Beach Ettinger, with findings and by approving City Council Resolution number 2022-59.
I'll second.
We have six ayes. Commissioner Matic is absent, motion carries.
Okay, there's no recommendation F, so the next motion will be to recommend approval of zoning text amendment number 22-009, which relates to Beach Ettinger, with findings and by approving City Council Resolution number 2022-59.
I'll second.
We have six ayes. Commissioner Matic is absent, motion carries.
Okay, and I believe this is the last one, which is recommend approval of zoning text amendment number 22-007, which is the Holly Stecliff specific plan with findings, and by approving draft ordinance number 4271, all with modifications to remove parcels 393 and 394 and forward to the City Council for consideration.
Second?
We have six ayes. Commissioner Matic is absent, motion carries.
Okay, that concludes our public hearing items, so do we have anything on the consent calendar?
We have no consent calendar items or non-public hearing items.
Okay, planning items, do we have a report?
Good evening, just wanted to give a quick update. I intentionally did not provide a tentative schedule. We're still looking to finalize a few items in December, but we absolutely anticipate having a December 13th meeting, so I just wanted to make all the commissioners aware. The November 22nd meeting, the regularly scheduled meeting, will be canceled, so our, our next regular meeting would be December 13th. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay, and then if there's anything that Planning Commissioners would like to add, I'll start with Commissioner Adam on my right.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins, Chair Perkins. Yeah, I just want to thank staff for all their hard work, multiple meetings, multiple phone calls, and I've always felt like I've gotten what I needed and all my questions answered better than my real world, real job, so thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo that thank you to staff, that's all.
I'll echo that too, because I think you guys do a fantastic job, and you always answer my questions, and I know this was a heavy lift, so I appreciate all your efforts to get it across the finish line and get us across the finish line, so thank you.
Okay, and then, of course, I too also echo thanking the staff for all their hard work, but also don't forget you guys, you know, the rest of the Planning Commissioners. We put a lot of time and effort into this, it was a very, a lot of facts and information, a lot of tough, painful decisions they have to make and that, and that kind of a thing. And also to the public, you know, it's, for their honest comments. So hopefully, we, hopefully this will be certified by, approved by City Council on the 29th. And then our next meeting for four of us is going to be our last meeting, so it's, it'll be bittersweet for us, so that'll be our last meeting, and last of all, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Yeah, same thing. Just wanted to thank staff and happy holidays to everybody if I don't see you, and, well, I'll be back on the 13th anyway, so, but anyway, I have no further comments, so thank you.
Thanks to staff and also because, even though it's a little ways away, but happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Okay, and that concludes our meeting for this evening. Thank you.[1740.41]